Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present Counsel Cahill?
Present.
Present Counsel Capano?
Present.
Present Counsel Chakoudas?
Present.
Present Counsel Calucci?
Present.
Present Counsel Seer?
Present.
Present Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present Counsel Net?
Present.
Present Counsel Trahan, absent Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present.
Before we get started, I just want to mention that Counselors Lapierre and Trahan both had scheduled vacations way in advance of tonight. Tonight's council meeting was switched around, so that's why they're not here tonight. They're actually on vacation, probably in a better place than we are right now. Please rise for a moment of silence. Okay, I'm going to ask Jayla Walsh to lead us in to the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
And I want to know where's my honey? See, you're putting honey in for everybody tonight. Good job, Jayla. Okay, accept the minutes. Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Communications?
Communication from her honor, the mayor. Dear counselors, I am hereby appointing Mr. Jeremy Smalley to the Conservation Commission. His term is effective immediately and will expire on July 14th, 2019. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor.
Approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Next communication.
Communication from Edward W. Blake, Deputy Chief of Police. Dear Counsel Seer, the Lynn Police Department has been designated by the mayor's office to apply for funding under the FY 2017 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. This grant may be used for any law enforcement or justice initiative previously eligible for funding under the Byrne or local law enforcement block grant programs. We are eligible to receive match requirement for this grant. If received, these funds may be expended over a four-year period. This application needs to be submitted by September 5th, 2017. We intend to use these funds as we have in previous years by allocating the funds to Lynn juvenile probation for communications, to Lynn adult probation for equipment to support their community policing activities, to Lynn housing and neighborhood development to assist them in continuing their summer jobs program, and the remainder to continue programs with the police department, departmental programs including gang intervention and investigation, maintenance of computer equipment, hardware and software upgrades, and data fees, and analytical program used to assist in the operation of the police department. This grant will help us continue to make Lynn a safer and more desirable community for all of its citizens. We are requesting approval by the Lynn City Council to apply for these funds. Thank you for your assistance. If you need any additional information, please let me know. Sincerely, Edward W. Blake, Deputy Chief of Police.
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Lapierre, absent Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Trahan, absent Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. First public hearing is on the city's annual action plan, including the use of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, appropriations for the Community Development Block Grant Home Investment Partnership Grant, and the Emergency Solutions Grant.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Council President, fellow council members. My name is Dawn Walker. I work for the Office of Economic and Community Development, and I'm here tonight seeking council approval of the City of Lynn's fiscal year 18 action plan and to authorize the mayor to submit the appropriate documentation to HUD. Each year, the city receives three entitlement grants from HUD. The largest is the Community Development Block Grant, and this year, we received an allocation of about $2.3 million, and we plan to allocate about $460,000 for housing activities, including a formal rehab, rehab grants and loans, and first-time home buyer assistance. We also plan to allocate about $180,000 as a matching grant with the state to undertake about $500,000 worth of improvements to the large section of Lynn Commons. We plan to allocate $350,000 for small business loans, $280,000 for infrastructure development, and we plan to allocate about $278,000 for 24 public service activities that will be implemented during the course of the year, three of which were not funded last year. The second entitlement grant is the home grant, and that was funded at a level of[331.02][331.04]$620,000. We plan to provide funding for a tenant assistance program, first-time home buyer assistance, and a neighborhood stabilization program. And the third grant is the Emergency Solutions Grant. And last year, we received an allocation of $208,000. And this year, we received a supplemental grant award from HUD, which makes it $521,000 that we will be receiving this year, and this year only, for these programs. And this funding will go for operation, operational expenses associated with overseeing the multi-service center building. We also allocated funding for two Lynn Shelter Association programs, their security assistance and their day program. And we also provided funding to the Lynn Housing Authority Neighborhood Development Group, which will provide a rental assistance program.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? What's the wish of the council?
Approve.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Lapierre, absent Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Trahan, absent Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Kettle Cuisine LLC for a sign permit at 3:30 Linway.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Kettle Cuisine right here.
Yes, my name is Brian Breakers from Ashy Sign Company, and we're asking to have approval for a non-eliminated wall sign that exceeds the 32 square feet.
That it?
Yeah, and I'm here to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Okay, can you answer the smell? Biden? Sir, why don't you take a seat anywhere up in the front here, and if the council asks questions for you? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Calvin. Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. Now, I'm not sure if I'm in favor of this or opposed to this, because I've been in the sign business, and I think in recent years, in our city, we've been trying to get renderings of signs with a particular look, color, grade, what it looks like, et cetera. And I don't know if this is the proper time, but it seems like there's a smell of it in the room. Just wondering, can we be talking about, like Counsel Calucci brought us, the smell that is in the name? We're very happy that Kettle Cuisine is in our city, employing our people. I understand they're fresh-made suits, but just to draw a parallel, about three summers ago, Counselor Capano saw to it that Dean Fu, who owns Garelec Farms, cleaned up their act, and the style of his name weighed on a Linway about three summers ago for several months. And I think I read in the paper, 1.4 million. So if it does take some money, get an IDI-C grant or something, or a loan, but please, can we address that?
Thank you.
I'd like to see renderings of the signs, so maybe I withdraw a few points on your support.
All right, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Capano?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to grant, but I just want to make a comment. I understand some of Mr. Anderson's comments, and this is Acme Signs, not Kettle Cuisine, but if we could relay the message back that, you know, we appreciate them working with DEP. So, so there are companies that are more egregious in their orders on the Linway now, who are in the process of being fined and are nearly, you know, either fined or about to be fined, and they are working with DEP. So, just for people that are wondering about that issue, because I know it's come up quite a bit, you know, over the years, but as far as the sign goes, it's a nice sign. It'll look good on the building, and I want to make a motion to grant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Lapierre, absent Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Trahan, absent Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Before we get going, I just want to thank the gentlemen from coming from Acme Sign. The issues that the council has have nothing to do with you, and we're working on it with Kettle Cuisine, so, but maybe when you talk to somebody there, you can let them know that there's some unhappy people. That's all. Thank you. Next hearing.
Petition of Vicki's Restaurant at 141 Essex Street to serve wine and malt beverages in an existing restaurant with hours from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Yep, please.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing and seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anybody in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing and hearing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm going to make a motion to table that until I talk with some of the neighbors over there, I've already talked with the owner, so motion to table.
Second. Motion to table by Counsel Seer, second. By Counsel Walsh, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Lapierre, absent Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes Counsel Trahan, absent Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Public hearing.
The next petition of NS Holdings LLC for an apartment house used in a business district at 559 563, 567, and 571 Summer Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor, and it's our favorite, city attorney.
Mr. President, through you to the members of the council. I'm attorney counsel, Alan, in my office at 60 Industry Street in Lynn. I'm here to have a petition. The principal is seated here, and I'll be the architect. He's over there at the boards. I think each member has four of them, so he said, the drawer and the corners, that was the cause of the details. The reason we're here is that the St. Michael's Church and the church are in the business district zone, and the requirement in the business district zone for residential use, apartment use, is approved by the city council. So we're here asking for your approval. I want to describe what the project is. Well, here also, for second things with respect to the archdiocese of Boston, has put certain restrictions in the deed, and the deed signed, in fact, by the condo has it, one of the uses that they favor and want is residential use. And I think Counsel Walsh should work with the applicant and the petitioner to try and strike the balance, which is consistent with the character of that neighborhood, which is, in many ways, an issue suspect, the proximity of residential neighborhoods. And this would create a new residential neighborhood. It would take the rectory and turn it into four units. It would take the school and rehab it and make it eight units. It would take the church itself and make that eight units for a total of 20 residential units. This would be known as the St. Michael's condominium. Part of the reason we want to call it the St. Michael's condominium is that anybody who's lived in Lynn a long time, anybody who's lived in West Lynn, is familiar with the history, the proud history of St. Michael's Church. We have the St. Michael Civic Association, and for many, many years, many Polish-American citizens of the city of Lynn worshipped at that St. Michael's Church. And as a brief aside, I'll just tell you that as a young man, as a college student, I delivered mail from River Street, Camden Street area, and I remember two things about that. One was as cold by the Sarus River in the winter, and the second was Polish-Americans sent a lot of Christmas cards. And so that neighborhood, for many, many years, was Polish-American. And in recognition of that, what the developers proposed to do, and one of the landscape areas, working in conjunction with my good friends at the St. Michael Civic Association, is to erect a plaque for some recognition for the many years and sacrifices of the people who lived in that neighborhood, who, some of whom attended that school, many of whom attended that church, and all of whom remember the contributions of those folks. So we're going to call it the St. Michael's condominium. It's going to be 20 units. It's going to be people coming and establishing a new neighborhood, much like you've seen off of Boston Street with the virtue of the state's development, not far up the street off Cottage, along Boston Street, there are existing condominium units. People take pride in all this, and we think that this is the best reuse of the property. The buildings will be remain intact. The one thing that the church wanted to do is preserve the stained glass windows. So it will look like it did before. As you look at the other drawings, you'll see the character of the churches there, the character of the rectory, the old school, those will be retained, and over a period of months, they'll be transformed into housing for people who want to move to Lynn and become taxpayers in the city of Lynn. But to do that, we need your approval for so-called lesser use, because it's a residential use in a business district. And I'd be glad to answer questions that any member may have with respect to the proposed development. As I said, the architect is here, the development team is here. We have been forming a series of drawings that depict what we hope will be a new neighborhood off of Cottage Street, so.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Allen. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Just give a few points as architect.
Could you please come to the microphone, please, sir? How about if we bring that over to you? That's all right, that's all right.
Motion approved.
Yeah, good idea. Thank you.
Some of you are totally familiar. I know Jay Walsh is familiar, because I met him over there, and I joked about him being an Irish kid, but he really wasn't. He was a Polish kid, and he went to church here. The rectory is this building. There's a parking lot here. There's some additional parking in here. The church, a few minutes close, will be townhouse units going up through the volume of the church. And the easiest building to work with is the school building, which I understand was a public school before it became part of St. Michael's. In fact, there are other buildings on the block that were used by the nuns, and so the building dates back to 1906, and it's a well-built building. And we're providing a green space, and when Sam called me the other day and mentioned a memorial to the history of the church, I said, "That's a great idea, and we can include it in this area here as a remembrance of the history of this piece of property." And this is a quick sketch of the property between the church and the school, and that's going to be green space, and right now, it's dirt. And all of these drawings are in your package. Side elevation of the church, side elevation of the school from Cottage Street side. Some of these buildings don't change much at all. I'm not saying you're going to do some window changes, et cetera, because you also really want to build the value. And the rectory building is residential scale, as you can see right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Walsh?
Thank you. This is, for me, a little kind of bittersweet. I grew up in this church. My family, my mom and dad were married here. I was baptized as a child in this church, so when somebody had come and said they were going to turn into condos at first, I think I was a little reluctant, just kind of having that history in the church. But, you know, going by the buildings every day, because I drive by there, I was kind of looking at it, saying, you know, it doesn't do it any justice sitting the way it is. It's starting to deteriorate. The archdiocese was able to take the benches and the pews out and the altars. They shipped them to Haiti after the earthquake down there. So I think, I think a lot of good things have come from the church, and I think they'll continue to happen. I appreciate the idea about the civic memorial. I think that's something that most people in the Polish community that are still here would appreciate that, and I appreciate it. And I can't think of a better way to have some condos down there, build some density in the neighborhood, and we're going to get a property back on the tax roll. It hasn't been on the tax roll for a number of years here, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. There's been, I know, at least four or five proposals over the years, and this proposal, because of the thoughtfulness of Counsel Walsh, working with the developer, past members of the St. Mike's Parish she's contacted, you couldn't, I don't think you could have a better development for that spot. It's condos instead of apartments, which is better for the city. It's something the developer wanted, and the one thing that most of these proposals don't have is parking. And so, all the way around, this is really, I think, a great fit, a win-win for everybody. It'll be great for the city, great for the developer, and great for that area, that businesses there will have, you know, more people to congregate their businesses and won't have to worry about parking. So I just wanted to mention, I know there was a lot of hard work put into that.
Thank you, Counsel Capano. Counsel Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I too echo the sentiments of Counselor Capano on a job well done by Counselor Walsh. I guess I have a question for the lot department in that, and nothing particularly, this isn't to question the current developer before us, because based on these renderings and the cooperation with the city, we very much appreciate it. I'm just curious, if there's a special permit granted for this type of use in a business district, I guess my question is, should something happen and this project be sold? What are the limitations to the next developer? And/or if the city wanted to impose some restrictions, I would suggest maybe some type of reverter in the special permit to not allow this to be sold to someone who could tear down three buildings and build a five-story structure that none of us would even anticipate, given that there is a special permit? I'm just curious if there was an interest in a dialogue on that, or if the lot department could opine as to whether or not that's something advisable.
That's my call, please.
To the Council President, depending on what type of restrictions are in the deed, those restrictions would run with the land. If there are specific restrictions you want to put in the special permit and record that with an agreement that it attached to the deed and it's on record, then it would run with the land.
I would, and I would only say that maybe that would be something advisable, because we have seen special permits be granted before, the economy changes, and then a lot of board councils are stuck with some smaller developments that they never anticipated, and this is a pretty substantial parcel of land. So I just would caution, just from experience, that these things go sideways sometimes.
I don't think I'd have an issue with that. I mean, if there's an amendment that we can make to it that wouldn't allow a five-story apartment building to be put on the property?
Or I would suggest maybe some type of, a special permit that, should this property be sold, the special permit may die with that sale. And I don't know if that's, is that something that can be recorded, or something that would hold up in court, but...
Attorney Vice Allen?
I think I might help. I have here a deed signed by the cottage, and the church has its own idea of what kinds of uses they should be, as I think I said in my presentation. It says in the deed, the proposed deed, that for residential development, which may include mixed use and/or retail office. Retail office is already permitted use in the business district, but then for 99 years, there are a list of restrictions that the church has asked run with the land, and they have many restrictions, and they, newer to the benefits, and St. Michael's Parish is now under the St. Mary's Collaborative. The deed provides that these restrictions can be enforced by St. Mary's Church. So I think that they were looking ahead, and even though they have some uses that you might favor, they didn't, so they exercised their right as the owners of the property. But in the, I'm reading from the deed, and it says that the use of the premises for residential development, so that's a deed restriction for the next 99 years.
Counsel Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would just say that the fact that the church put restrictions on their, on the deed relative to the sale, that it would be wise for the city of Lynn to consider maybe a restriction on the special permit specifically. The church would have no say over a special permit, and it just might be something to consider, that should this property ever be sold without it being developed, that this special permit would run with the land as well as these deed restrictions?
Right.
And that future developers could come in and have a dramatically different view of what this project could look like. Just, just a little caution for the future, because we have seen this happen before.
So if I may, to some understand, what you're asking for is that the special permit doesn't transfer over with the sale of the land, or if the developer, for whatever reason, is not able to finish the project, and the bank takes it over, someone else gets it, that, because we have run into that problem on Brookline Street, I mean, Counsel Barton and myself remember that, is that what you're suggesting?
I would suggest that it would be wise for the city to cover themselves, just because the sheer size of this lot lends itself to much more larger and grandiose development than what is being proposed here, and I think Counselor Walsh is right to have found the right person for this property. But economics change, and we just want to make sure that if it's somebody else, that you're not dealing with a headache in the future, when, you know, if the special permit regirs back to, if the special permit is extinguished upon sale, then you can work again with another developer, which I think is what, I've heard from you for a while about this specific property.
Just my, with respect to sales, as you know, condominium is a form of ownership. It's not a form of zoning. We're here because of the zoning difference that says this is a business district. The city decided that the church can go anywhere, a school can go anywhere. It happened to be in a business district. Now, to put a residential use in a business district, you need the city council's consent. You don't, we wouldn't be here if we were going to propose a business, because it's in a business district. But when you say sales, understand that there are going to be 20-unit owners, and they're going to, the developer's going to sell them a unit for residential purposes. And the way you deal with a condominium is you have what's called a condominium regime, and you have a master deed, and a trust, and these impose further restrictions on the land, because people are going to be living together under a set of rules. It's similar, if you were a single-family homeowner, and you lived in one of the developments, for example, up in Ward 1, where people under the age of 62 live in Del's Pond Village, or people lived at Stony Brook where there were covenants. People can band together and put restrictions in the deed, and they have more impact in the sense that it runs with the title to the land. My only concern is that if you have some clause that says something could either revert or change, that may make it difficult for people to get findings, because somebody's going to come along and ask somebody like me to look at the documents, and I'll say, "Yeah, but..." and I'll say, "Yeah, but, there's always a possibility." So generally, A, deed restrictions are looked on somewhat with disfavor, and they're usually for 30 years. This is for 99 years. And secondly, any kind of reversion makes lending institutions nervous, because they want, and they'll review the condominium documents to ensure that the uses are for residential purposes, because they're going to be making residential loan mortgage loans. So in terms of, anybody who came back other than a business use, for any other use other than a business use would require city council consent. And so the parcel is zone business. It seems to me that you've now limited by putting a special permit that says it's going to be used for residential purposes. So if somebody comes in for any other kind of residential purpose, or any other purpose other than what the zoning ordinance currently allows, they would have to get permission from the city council. And one of the reasons, as the council has noted, it's taken a while, is that people looked at this site, and the people who looked at it had different ideas than these folks did. These folks wanted to take what, not tear it down, preserve it, and use it for a residential purpose. There are certainly other people, and I'm certain the councilors who were directly involved in the negotiation stuff, who did have other ideas. But between the Archdiocese, the councilors who were involved, what evolved was a proposal that's before you tonight for residential use. And so I would think that since the special permit is for, and the reason it says apartment house is that in Lynn, the zoning ordinance says that if you have anything more than two dwelling units under a roof, it's an apartment house. So here we've got four in the rectory, eight in the school, eight in the church. That's why we have to ask you for that use, that commission. And once you get that use permission, now the people who own it, if they put it through condominium status, then there's a master deed and a trust and rules of all the people who live there. And those documents are further regulated, because you can't get bank financing, because since the last crash of the real estate world, the Dodd-Frank building, those others, put restrictions on. And so people who are seeking home mortgages now have documents for condominiums reviewed, and the banks want to ensure that the loans that they are making to individual unit owners are for residential purposes. That's why they are making those loans. So you've got a series of checks and balances that are in place, or that could be put in place. But this really started with the input of the councilors and the church.
Counselor Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two things. One, there are already existing restrictions in the deed. I feel very hard to believe that one more restriction in the special permit would somehow prevent a deal from being done. And secondly, once, if this gets built, and then it satisfies the special permit, there's no issue, whether or not people are buying a condominium or not, because the use has been met by the special permit. It's not like the bank's going to come around and say, "Okay, we're not going to fund you, because there's a restriction on a special permit." The only way that would ever come to play is if another tenant decided to open up a business in the, in the, in one of the condos and somehow be in violation of the master plan and the deed. Once it's, we're talking about before it's being built. Once it's built, the special permit works. It's prior to it being built, the special permit being in place allows developers to do certain things. And if it's not what we all thought it was, well, then I think the special permit shouldn't be allowed to go forward. Does that make sense? I don't see this as all precluding future folks from buying, from being able to finance their deal in the condo at all. It's either the special permit's met, or it's not met. And what we're saying here is if some happens, and this development doesn't go forward based on the special permit, and it changes hands to somebody else, that special permit will be there, regardless of the deed restrictions from the church. It's the cities allowing someone to build something that's not conforming to our zoning, which is a big deal, which we're fine with, because this makes sense. But what about the future purchasers, if there are any? If there aren't, it's built, there's no big deal, because the special permit will be existence on a conforming lot. I'm hoping I'm clear on that. But as far as like people being able to purchase, it doesn't make any sense. That the, they'll do a title search, they'll do a deed search, but it won't be like a bank, you know, the Eastern Bank will say, "Wow, you know, you bought this condominium, but there's a special permit that says you can only have condominiums, and you're buying a condominium, it's too risky of a deal." It just doesn't happen.
Counselor Capano.
Yeah, so I'm trying to understand, Counsel Cahill, it makes sense. But I don't remember ever doing that for any of the other places that we have approved. So I don't know what an example of the type of stipulation you would add to this to satisfy your concerns, because that would make it easier to try to make a decision on whether, you know, it's something we'd want to do or not.
Mr. President, I do recall, and you correct me if I'm wrong, there was a special permit granted when they sold the Parrot Street Library for condominiums only. And that the developer of that came before this council, because the economy had soured, and requested to change to rentals. And the neighbors were not happy with the rentals. And because there was that restriction, he wasn't allowed to just do whatever he wanted to do with the property. And that's a perfect example of where the economy had changed, the desires of the neighborhood had changed, but we were still facing, you know, with, we were still faced with a project that would have significantly changed from what we initially approved, you know, because five years had elapsed. I guess that's what, Parrot Street might be the best example. And they are currently still condominiums. They're still condos today.
Well, they're a apartment.
Oh, they are? Well, sorry about that.
They're not happy.
Well, see, there you go.
But those that didn't have the deed restrictions imposed on them from the church, which we could, we could, I'm just trying to think of a stipulation that would satisfy your concerns. If we, if the city said something like, imposed something, just thinking off the top of my head, that in order for, you know, there can be no change to, in other words, to support what the church is saying. If the city supported those formally, would that satisfy the concerns that you have?
I guess that's a good question. And again, it's not for what I want satisfied.
Well, I'm trying to understand, you know, your reasoning and how to address that. I mean, that might be one example on Parrot Street, but there's been others too. I mean, we made adjustments on the waterfront. There's been, you know, plenty of, plenty of that type of...
Counselor Capano, if I may jump in real quick, and I'll use this as an example, where we didn't put restrictions, and we're all, who's looking for residential, you know, owner-occupied units was Brookline Street. And there was going to be 150 condos that were going to be built there, and townhouses. And everybody thought it was a great project. And I was the ward councillor, I led the charge, I thought it was a great deal. Fortunately, the developer fell on hard times, the economy didn't do too good. The banks wound up taking over the property. And we didn't put any restrictions on there. And the developer that wound up buying the property from the bank decided he was going to put 158 rental units in there, which is not what the neighborhood needed or wanted. But if we had put the restrictions on there, and I don't know how Counselor Walsh feels about it, but that's an example of us not doing that. Go ahead, Counselor Capano.
So could I ask Attorney Markopolis? So if, for instance, the developer wanted to change the use from condominiums to apartments, would he have to come to the city council first to do that?
The chair, I'm not...
Did you go to the mic?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We've not had the benefit of reviewing the title. We don't know what the deed says, we don't know what the restrictions are. I understand what Counsel Cahill is saying, and I understand his concerns, they're legitimate concerns. I think we really have to look into it, and perhaps draft something that we can then show the council at the next meeting as a proposed special permit with specific stipulations. And maybe what we may have to do is to take some of the restrictions within the deed and parrot them in the special permit. Perhaps that might be something that Counsel Cahill would be agreeable to. But we don't, just don't have enough information at this point to answer you.
Okay. Counselor Walsh.
What if we put a height restriction on it?
Pardon?
A height restriction for the property, so that they couldn't exceed current heights or something? Would that, I'm thinking of these five-story buildings that are being built, and wondering if we put a height restriction on this, if that would help at all?
I would just, I would just, the spire is a little tall. I would just be worried about them saying that the roof line is from the top of the steeple, essentially.
I'd like to move forward with this. I mean, I understand the concerns, and I would have them too, I think. But, you know, is there something right now that we can put on it as a stipulation, and it carries through, that would be effective, that everybody could be comfortable with?
Counselor Cahill.
Just because I know how hard you've worked on this, and I know exactly how many folks you've met with, that it might be, and I'd like to hear from the Lot Department, be beneficial to let this special permit go along with this developer in this deal. And that should all that change, then the special permit would extinguish. That way, it's his for as long as he wants it. And if he wants to sell to somebody else, well, then good luck to the next developer who has to come in here and try to either buy the project and deal with the desires of the neighborhood. And I'm curious to see if that would be something that the Lot Department would say is approved, can be approved? And I don't think it'd be much of a language change, other than this shall expire upon the sale or conveyance of this land to another entity. Something as easy as that.
I think comfortably you could say that any variance will require a review by the council. I think you could say that. But for you to say that the special permit expires, I think you'd have to, I think there are some concerns there. I think you'd have to be very specific in what instances that the special permit were to expire. The practical concern would be, I can't see how this developer would get any type of financing with that type of a restriction in a special permit. I think any type of a lender would look at it and not lend money if they were concerned that at any point in time, before construction or during construction, their money would be threatened. And as a practical matter, I don't know how viable that could be.
I agree with you 100%. You couldn't put any kind of expiration date on this, on this, on the special permit. It would never be financed, ever. But something to the effect of, should these, should the developer deviate from these plans?
I think clearly you can say that, Counsel Cahill. I think you can say, you can attach to the special permit the specific plans that you're now looking at, reviewing at, and deciding on, and have language in there saying that any variance whatsoever will require the applicant to come back to the council and/or possibly cause the revocation of the special permit.
And I would only caution the "any" part, because that would probably spook the developer, because he doesn't want to come back here because of a bathroom has been changed from, you know, one side of the, but any, I mean, I hate to use...
Substantive, any substantive change that's determined by the Inspection Services Department. They have ways that they analyze the changes and determine if they're substantive in nature.
I think that's a minimal. And then if there is substantive changes, they can come back, and we can modify the special permit to allow for it. That gives Counsel Walsh some protections to ensure that this is the project that he proves today is the project that's made in the future.
I'd be comfortable with that in a form of a motion.
Okay. But first, Counsel Capano.
No, I was just...
All set? All right, so Counsel Cahill is making a motion.
Second.
It's been seconded, discussion. Roll call. What is the...
What he said.
The motion would be for the special, for a motion to include in a special permit, it's not an order, a stipulation that should the development, as proposed on August 22nd, 2017, to the city council, be deemed by the Inspection Services Department to have significantly altered or changed, altered or changed, that those alterations or changes must be approved by the city council. Reviewed and approved.
Reviewed.
Seconded.
All right, it's been seconded. All right, do we vote on the stipulation first, or do we vote on the project and add that in?
The amendment first, which is the stipulation.
Okay. All right, so we're voting on the amendment. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre, absent. Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan, absent. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre, absent. Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan, absent. Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
No other public hearings? Public hearings, let's set down.
Okay, we have the petition of RK Dollar Discount, 70 Commercial Street, for a signed permit. Petition of AL Prime, 417-423 Boston Street, for a signed permit. Petition of La Perata Restaurant, 22 Union Street, for an all-alcohol license with the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Sunday through Saturday. Petition of Thomas McGovern, Birchwood Estates, 6 Upland Place, for residential use in the Boston Street Business District by construction of seven dwelling units. Petition of National Grid to install a regulated valve and sidewalk at the corner of Rockaway Street and Essex Street. And the petition of National Grid in Verizon to install one joint pole and one pole with a guy wire on Kent Road.
Set them down. Counsel, motion made, set down. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Committee reports, public safety. Counsel Barton.
unanimous vote of committee, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Licensing. Counsel Walsh.
unanimous vote of committee, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Utilities Committee, Counsel Capano.
There was a motion, motion to approve the minutes on the agenda. And we had a motion to bring up to the council for a vote.
Second.
So, you know, we started this utilities committee, you know, a couple of months ago. And, you know, we've had mixed results. I think it works, I think it works better. But, you know, we have some problems with Verizon. I mean, they're just not, they're just not responding. So I'm going to make a motion here, and people can add to it if they want. If they don't want to vote for this, I understand. But the motion is to refuse all work done by Verizon in the city until they remove the wires from 17 Hobson Street and the adjoining, adjacent properties. Because this wire is hanging all over the street. Comcast showed up almost immediately. We told Stan Yusevitz, who was here at the public hearing. We told a couple of the Verizon guys that have come to the utilities committee. They've all said they'd go down there and take care of it, and no one has showed up. And not, you know, not that the wires are not gone yet, they haven't even gone to look at them yet. And if they have, they haven't told us about it. And it's been a really long time. So I want to make that motion.
What's your addressing, Ed Peter?
17 Hobson Street and the adjacent properties. There's just wire, if you drive down Hobson Streets off of South Street, there's just wires. The kid can't play ball in his yard, because the wire is just too low. And then there's wires on top of the garage next door, just laying there from the pole across the street. Isn't that... There's at least, what, five, six wires just, you know, coming down off the pole? You know, if the garage wasn't there, they'd be on the sidewalk across the street. So, you know, it's just really unacceptable, you know, for a company that big, you know, to not be able to respond and, you know, never mind, you know, take them down. They don't even show up or call up and tell us why. So, and they've been identified as Verizon wires. We originally didn't know if they were Comcast or Verizon. Comcast showed up, they said they were Verizon's, you know. Whether they're going to show up and say they're Comcast, I don't know, but they haven't been there. And I'm just sick and tired of dealing with them. I, you know, we need a better response. We bring them here, a public hearings, they, you know, they tell us they're going to do this, they give us the number to call, we call the number, no one shows up. So, um, that's the motion.
So, do you want to add to the motion that we send as a counsel to Verizon?
Yes.
A disappointment with them, because you can put my name on the top of the list there for that, too. So, is that what you would like to do?
Yes, I would like that sent to them, you know, hopefully they'll respond.
That's in the form of a motion?
The last part of that, unless there's an emergency. I mean, I, you know, if there's, you know, emergency equipment at Union Hospital or something, I don't want them to go down. But as far as I'm coming down with their everyday nuts and bolts types of things that they want to do, I don't see any reason to have to push that. And I got people in my ward that really need their services right now, so that doesn't help me, you know? But what is, what's right is right, and they're totally wrong on this, and, you know, this is one way we might be able to help this situation out.
Okay, that's in the form of a motion, seconded. Seconded.
Second.
All right, discussion, Counsel Cahill.
Thank you, um, and a very bold step by Counsel Capano. I can definitely sense his frustration on this. I'm just curious if this means effective immediately, or is there a date such as our next council meeting, that if they do not fix it by that date, all permits cease?
Moral.
Effective immediately, if that's possible.
Because that would be very...
We're not meeting for two weeks, right? The response we think we've been lacking with them, absolutely.
I would only suggest that a, some type of date to allow them to get their act together, even though they clearly have not. I agree, I agree, I agree, I agree, I agree, I agree. I just would, once some residents are trying to get their stuff done, like maybe tomorrow, the next day, the next day, and they find out they can't, they're going to freak out.
How about we give them to the next council meeting, Counsel Capano?
I'm telling you, I got constituents that need their services, that I know of right now, but I also have constituents that have had wires hanging all over the place, in front of their houses, on the sidewalks, all over the city, and that they're not responding to. Sometimes you just have to make a sacrifice, and this is the right thing to do. You can't tell me that this isn't the right thing to do. There is no, we have, as far as giving them enough time, how much time can we give them? We've been giving them time, really, for a few years. They might, since I've been here, I don't remember them ever, ever responding, you know, in an acceptable fashion, you know? And it's only got worse. Actually, the more times they come here, the worse it gets.
And believe me, I am no defender of Verizon. I'm, I'm, what I'm concerned about is the consumer and some of the developments we have going on and stopping. It'd just, it'd be interesting to see if they were giving an ultimatum date and they continue to do that, then they do deserve not to have their permits pulled. I mean, not to have their permits going forward.
Oh, we can't pull the permits we've already given them.
How many times do we have to draw the line?
I know.
We've told them a couple weeks ago, the last time they were here, right? We've told them a month ago, we've told them two months ago. Matter of fact, this particular issue has been going on for over a year, I think, at least, at least. So, how much time do we have to give them? Let them adjust to us. Why should we have to keep adjusting to them? If, I told you, if there's an emergency somewhere and they need something, you know, I understand, if they want to do that and if they can, if there's an emergency, fine. But sometimes we have to take a stand. What do we do? Just keep calling them in and ask them to go, they don't show up? What about that person? What about the kid that can't play ball in his yard? You know, because there's a wire hanging down, you know, that you could probably hit, you know?
Counsel Barton.
Counsel Capano, everybody here feels your pain. I mean, we all go through the same thing, but for us not to set a date, to give them a date that this is going to affect and not do it right away, I don't think we can do it right away, and not the right thing to do.
We send a registered letter, and whatever date they receive that, that's the date.
Unless, unless Hobson Street, if I correct, if I'm correct, unless Hobson Street is fixed? Counsel Walsh.
The problem with that is, we probably won't even know, because they don't tell anybody, they're talking to nobody, they've been asking. I was down there with Counsel Capano. I don't know, it looks like something from India, you know, with all the telephone wires hanging off the poles everywhere, down through the person's yard. And, you know, if you give them some time, how would we know? Like, if you gave them to the next council meeting, right, and said, hey, you know, this better be fixed, you know? How would we know? Like, how would we be able to make any stipulations? If you said a week, how would we be able to act on that? Would it automatically roll into if you said we give you a one-week grace period in order to fix it?
Well, here's what I would do is, give them till the next council meeting to get it taken care of. If it's not done, and I agree 100% with what you're saying, Counsel Capano, because they've been completely non-responsive to us, um, you know, but at least by us sending them a letter tomorrow that says that they have till the next council meeting to get those wires down or fixed or whatever it is you're looking for. If they don't, don't even bother asking for a hearing, because they're not even going to get a hearing.
Okay, if somebody wants to modify the motion to reflect what you're saying, I could accept that.
Modify it.
Can you say that again?
Modify it.
Okay.
And, and, Mr. President, if we just add on any other longstanding Verizon issues along with just 15 Hobson, it might be better to make sure...
They took care of Harvest.
I, I totally agree with Counsel Capano.
That's the only one I know of. I said, if people want to add to it, I don't have a problem with it.
Just to get it all, and I, believe me, I do Comcast, I'm a Comcast guy.
But I don't know, I don't, I don't know where these other places are. I know of that place. If I ride around, I could come up with 10 places tomorrow easily, I am sure. But this one in particular, we have been calling and calling and calling.
Okay, so that was in the form of a motion. They have until the next council meeting, they'll receive a letter tomorrow. It's been seconded. How about we do a roll call on it, because we've had quite a bit to say about it.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre, absent, Counsel Lozey. Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan, absent, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Ways and Means, Counsel Trahan is not here. How about Counsel Net, would you like to give us the, your interpretation of that meeting tonight?
Want me to read them? Okay, transfer the sum of $158,766 from the account of reserve to the account of the Lynn Police Payroll to fund unanticipated retirements that have occurred in FY18. Transfer the sum of $50,000 from the account of reserve to the account of TBD Capital Hood Repairs to fund the FY18 feasibility study for the Accelerated Repair Program for the purpose of replacing the roof, windows, and doors of the hood school. Transfer the sum of $117,829.04 from the account of excess worker comp expense to the account of workers' comp payroll to fund the June 2017 bill in full. Transfer the sum of $1,750 from the account of insurance expense to the account of workman's comp expense to fund the legacy claim fee per contract. Transfer the sum of $478.87 from the account of DPW Fire Department Motor Vehicle Expense to the account of Lynn Fire prior year unpaid bills to fund unexpected expense from FY17. Monies now reside in the DPW operating budget to streamline production. Transfer the sum of $390.14 from the account of the Fire Department Med and Surge Expense to the account of the Lynn Fire prior year unpaid bills to fund unexpected medical expenses from FY17. Transfer the sum of $702.84 from the account of the Lynn Fire Medical Expense to the Lynn Fire prior year unpaid bills account to fund unexpected medical expenses from FY17. Transfer the sum of $250 from the account of LFD Expense to the Lynn Fire prior year unpaid bills to fund unexpected expense from FY17. Order that the City Comptroller be and hereby authorized to take the following actions: certify as an available fund the amount of $700,000 as allotted to the Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Health and Human Services to fund a grant initiative for the FY1819 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $596,887 as allotted to the Lynn Police Fire Department, Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY18 State 9/11 Support and Incentive Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $55,854 as allotted to the Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY18 State 911 Department Training Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $45,000 as allotted to the Lynn Police Department by the Department of Mental Health for the FY18 Jail Diversion Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $56,741 as allotted to the Lynn Fire Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY18 9/11 Training Grant and EMD Regulatory Compliance Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $35,000 as allotted to the Lynn Police Department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security as an amendment for the FY17 Step Grant Sustained Traffic Enhancement Program. Certify as an available fund the amount of $1,316,399.09 as allotted to the Lynn Office of Economic and Community Development by Massachusetts Emergency Management Association for the repairs of Seaport Marina caused during the February 8th and 9th, 2013 Blizzard. Certify as an available fund the amount of $36,017 as allotted to the Lynn School Department by North Shore Workforce Investment Board for 2017 Machining Application and Theory Grant to be held at LVTI. Certify as an available fund the amount of $167,552 as allotted to the Lynn School Department by the Department of Early Ed for the 391 F-18 Inclusive Preschool Learning Environment Grant, and that's it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and, um, Mr. President, all unanimous, unanimous vote of the committee to approve. I make a motion to accept.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre, absent, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan, absent, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Was there an emergency on that?
An emergency as well.
Motion made for an emergency, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre, absent, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan, absent, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next is public properties, and before we, uh, get into that, I just want to say that every now and then, fine-tuned machine has a little hiccup to it, and I think we had a little hiccup tonight there. I can tell you that Counsel Net, Barton, Calucci, and Chakoudas did fantastic job tonight, along with Al from Attorney Markopolis. And I know we're going to be kind of changing a few things around from what we did tonight, but I just want to say that they did an outstanding job, um, for the first time, trying to deal with what we were trying to deal with tonight, so...
I agree.
Thank you.
You guys really did a good job. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk, and then we'll get into the properties, okay?
Okay, the first order is that the City of Lynn accept the grant of easement as set forth in a plan of easement for roadway purposes over a way known as Warren Place, prepared by Reed Land Surveyors, 365 Chadon Street, Lynn, Mass., dated July 11, 2017, as set forth in Exhibit A, attached and incorporated herein. Said grant of easements from four Warren Place, easement area A, 1,219 plus or minus square feet, eight Warren Place, easement area B, 715 plus or minus square feet, and 12 Warren Place, easement area C, 941 plus or minus square feet, are being given to the City of Lynn for nominal consideration in order to further and advance and accommodate right-of-way adjustments along the various public ways. The acceptance of the grants of the easement shall be subject to the Law Department's approval. It is ordered that the City of Lynn accept and affirm as a public way located in Lynn, Essex County, Massachusetts, commonly known as Warren Place, being more specifically shown on the plan referenced above pursuant to Section 12.08.10A of the municipal code of the City of Lynn, Massachusetts, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 82, Section 21.24. Further order that the mayor be authorized to execute any and all documents required by the Law Department to accept and effectuate the above.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre, absent, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan, absent, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the request to redeem property located at 80 Lowell Street. Okay, I'm, back up, we need an emergency on that. Is there a motion made for an emergency? Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci. Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre, absent, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan, absent, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, request to redeem property located at 80 Lowell Street, Lowell Street Court. Approve. Motion made to approve.
Second.
Seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre, absent, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan, absent, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Request to grant, the request from the Lynn School Department to dispose of surplus grinders from the Lynn Tech Machine Shop. What's the wish of the council?
Motion to grant, approve.
Motion made to approve, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Counsel Barton.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider and rescind the vote to accept the Lynn Housing Authority's bid to purchase 48 Sanders Road. All of the applicants appeared to be qualified. I would like them to have the opportunity to submit proposals, house plans for 48 Sanders Road.
That's in the ma...
That's in a mo, that's a motion.
Motion seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?[1690.77]
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapierre absent, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan absent, Councilor Walsh?
Councilor Barton?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to allow all applicants to submit proposal, house plans for 48 Saunders Road at the next scheduled public property committee meeting. And, um, I ask that the clerk, Terry, whoever it be, notify all of these, um, applicants.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill? Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudas? Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapierre absent, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan absent, Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, I just wanna say, especially to Councilor Net, what a good job you guys did tonight. That was a difficult meeting, so, thank you. Ordinance and rules. Councilor Lozey, I know you weren't there, I don't know who sat in for you.
I, I don't know who sat in for the ordinance and rules committee. Somebody sat in on the ordinance.
Who sat in for, uh, ordinance?
Councilor Walsh?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, to have all of it set down for public hearings? Yeah, uh, would you like to read them, the, uh, public hearings?
Uh, motion to set down a public hearing regarding a proposed zone ordinance change for the former Marshall Middle School neighborhood. Motion to set down a public hearing regarding a proposed ordinance change to the door-to-door solicitation ordinance. Motion to set down a public hearing regarding a proposed ordinance requiring applicants for permits and licenses to pay all advertising mailing costs in addition.
Set them down.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapierre absent, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan absent, Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, new business, Councilor Chakoudas.
Yes, received a request from the owner at 3-11 Mount Vernon. Wants to extend his hours for the food trucks to 9:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday, seven days a week. I think it's a great idea. If anyone's been down there, there's a line at the food trucks all the time, so, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve, seconded, discussion, all, uh, roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Lapierre absent, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan absent, Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Councilor Barton?
Okay, under the public property, the following properties were awarded this evening. Uh, 48 Saunders Road has been rescinded. Morton Hill Ave was, um, $4,300. And Acre Island Ave, uh, was redeemed by the former owner, um, approved to be redeemed by the former owner.
Approve.
Second.
Councilor Net makes a motion, second?
I seconded, yep.
Second by Calucci, roll call.
Councilor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Seer? Absent. Councilor Lapierre absent, Councilor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Trahan absent, Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Okay. And we have, yep, we have one more, um, Geron Way.
Peter, on the new business?
Yeah, new business, uh, I'd like to make a motion to take off the table and grant an order relative to a proposed change in the name of a portion of Geron Way to Pine Hill Terrace. Uh, this was brought up, uh, a while back, um, at the council here, but we had to table it because we were informed that it had to go to the planning board. The planning board met, um, a few weeks ago. I went to the meeting, it was approved, and, uh, now it comes back to us. I wanna take it off the table, and, um, that's the motion.
Motion to take off the table, seconded, all those in favor? Motion to approve?
Yep, thank you.
Second, second. Motion made?
Yep, motion approved.
Okay, this has to be written to the record first.
Okay.
Okay, dear President Seer, at a meeting of the Lynn Planning Board held this evening, the board held a public hearing to determine whether to change the name of Geron Way to Pine Hill Terrace. Motion by Paul Price, seconded by Steve Upton, to recommend to the City Council that they change the name of Geron Way to Pine Hill Terrace